... something very similar right now. It is.
Dual monitors online.
Nope. No worries.
Wow, we have a great crowd.
Good for you.
Now, six three, the March fifth work study session will begin. We'll start with Citizen Public Safety Academy, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. City Southgate celebrated their first graduates of the Citizens Public Safety Academy on Thursday, February 27th. This eight-week program, which began in early January, focused on providing an in-depth look at the city's police and fire departments. Each week, members of the public safety departments met with participants and discussed a wide variety of important subjects. These topics included emergency preparedness, police training and certifications, the school safety, the Downriver SWAT, crash investigations, criminal justice, and a live demonstration of our K-9 unit. There was also a behind-the-scenes tour of our police and fire departments. And thankfully, it was the first time all of them had seen the jail. I originally was going to attend just the first session, but found the presentations and discussions very interesting, so I ended up attending all of the classes. And I truly enjoyed the topics that they covered and the interaction with our residents. I commend Public Safety Director Joe Marsh for bringing this idea to my attention. Our original discussions took place pre-COVID, so it's been on the back burner for a few years while we brought it back to life at the end of last year and had our first class this year, which turned out to be really wonderful. Twelve residents signed up for this inaugural academy, and most are here tonight. I'd like to acknowledge each member and thank them for taking an interest in learning more about this, our city, and the public safety departments that serve us all. Pat Foyer, want to come up here? We'll just get a group picture as well. Catherine Sands and her husband, Richard. This is a husband-and-wife team, you know, only one during the sessions here. Gary Martin. Natalie Holsider. Rose Heckman. Debbie Dombey. Carla Hines. Bob Hines is married to Carla, but he wasn't there all the time, so he was still an honorary member. We also had Norm Love Day, Laura King, and Elizabeth DeDoius. So this is the first crew, the first graduating class of our academy. Joe, why don't you come on up and, as well as Mark, you too, if you're vital on this, and our fire chief as well, because all those departments were very prevalent in that, so.
I'm going to spread out for the academy, but otherwise I'm not going to get it. Okay. Like that, like that. There we go. All right.
Thank you very much. City Southgate celebrated their first graduates of the Citizens Public Safety Academy on Thursday, February 27th. This eight-week program, which began in early January, focused on providing an in-depth look at the city's police and fire departments. Each week, members of the public safety departments met with participants and discussed a wide variety of important subjects. These topics included emergency preparedness, police training and certifications, the school safety, the Downriver SWAT, crash investigations, criminal justice, and a live demonstration of our K-9 unit. There was also a behind-the-scenes tour of our police and fire departments. And thankfully, it was the first time all of them had seen the jail. I originally was going to attend just the first session, but found the presentations and discussions very interesting, so I ended up attending all of the classes. And I truly enjoyed the topics that they covered and the interaction with our residents. I commend Public Safety Director Joe Marsh for bringing this idea to my attention. Our original discussions took place pre-COVID, so it's been on the back burner for a few years while we brought it back to life at the end of last year and had our first class this year, which turned out to be really wonderful. Twelve residents signed up for this inaugural academy, and most are here tonight. I'd like to acknowledge each member and thank them for taking an interest in learning more about this, our city, and the public safety departments that serve us all. Pat Foyer, want to come up here? We'll just get a group picture as well. Catherine Sands and her husband, Richard. This is a husband-and-wife team, you know, for only one during the sessions here. Gary Martin. Natalie Holsider. Rose Heckman. Debbie Dombey. Carla Hines. Bob Hines is married to Carla, but he wasn't there all the time, so he was still an honorary member. We also had Norm Love Day, Laura King, and Elizabeth DeDoius. So this is the first crew, the first graduating class of our academy. Joe, why don't you come on up and, as well as Mark, you too, if you're vital on this, and our fire chief as well, because all those departments were very prevalent in that, so.
You don't want me to spread out for the academy, but otherwise I'm not going to get it. Okay. Like that, like that. There we go. All right.
Got it?
I'm going to get it.
I'm going to stay up and say a couple of comments, because I know during the last session, we were kind of critiquing the academy, and there were a couple. Mr. Sands, would you like to come up and perhaps, Rose, did you want to say something? I know you were very vocal during the last session, so, do you want to say anything, Pat? Okay. Okay. The mic's open to you, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody here, that the academy was very well-received, learned quite a lot, got to understand and know what was going on with the police and fire department, and really enjoyed the program. And I would certainly recommend it throughout the Downriver area for all the communities. Absolutely.
Thank you.
I think the overall census for everyone in the class was, the excitement was just overwhelming with the information we learned, the education, and the well-trained people that came and gave the class. I have to say, I was so proud, by the end of the class, to be a citizen of Southgate, that we have such a well-trained police department accredited by the state of Michigan. And I think that that really needs to expand to the whole Downriver area. But I can't thank enough the mayor and everybody else that put this program on, and I would encourage anyone in the city to join it.
Thank you. Pat Foyer, and I too hear exactly what they said in reference to, it was a great program, thanks to the police department and the fire department, because I know it takes a lot of work to put a program together. I mean, it was three hours every night for eight weeks. That's a lot of time to fill up, and I just really appreciate all the hard work that they did, and I'm a better citizen because of it. Thank you. Madam Chair, I think Debbie came in late, but she's there. You want to stand up, Debbie? You're part of the crew too, so thank you. All right, we're going to the official report. I just have a couple since I.
Wait, what'd you say? I'm going into official report.
Yeah.
Throw it back to me, I'll throw it back to you.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's right. I figured, I just have a couple of things to say here and there, because I knew the Citizens Academy would take a few minutes. Excuse me. During the last week, on February 17th, the Southgate Community School District held a student day camp during winter break. Each day, the elementary students learn something different about their community. And on that Friday, I was invited to address the students on the role of mayor. Also, that day, visits from our police and fire departments were included, as well as our city clerk, Jan Ferenz. It was delighted, delightful experience, as you can imagine what elementary students might ask you. But I really appreciate and want to thank camp coordinator Beth Hinsman and her staff for including representatives from the city. It was really a delightful experience. Later that day, there was a grand opening for another new business in Southgate. Missy Ken's K-9 grooming officially opened at 16020 Dix Toledo on the south end of town. This was an amazing celebration for the owner and over 30 family members, customers, and friends in attendance. I have to say, it's by far the largest group of people to turn out for a grand opening that I've experienced as I've been here as mayor. Owner Missy Peters has been in business for over 30 years and chose Southgate after searching in several Downriver communities. A few years ago, she had suffered major health challenges, but attributes her recovery to God and family, and it's great to see her back on her feet. Joining me in welcoming this new business to Southgate were city clerk Jan Ferenz, city council president Zoe Cuspo, and council members Karen George and Victoria Arage. So it was really quite a celebration with all the people there, and it was a small building, so it really was packed. So congratulations and best wishes to Missy and her staff for continued success. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Clerk.
Good evening. I actually have something. I'm no surprise. The local election for mayor, clerk, and treasurer and seven council members will be held this year. A primary election will be held on Tuesday, August 5th, if necessary, and the general election is on Tuesday, November 4th. Packages for all positions are now available in the clerk's office. The petition deadline for filing is April 22nd at 4:00 p.m. There will also be a special school election that's scheduled for Tuesday, May 6th. You can either vote absentee ballot or at your precinct on Election Day. There will be no early voting this year at any of the elections. And sometime in late May, a precinct consolidation will be implemented. Any registered voter who has assigned a different precinct number, or if their voting location is changed, they will be mailed a new voter registration card. Once the consolidation is approved, it'll be posted on the city's website, and then you'll receive your card shortly thereafter. So if you have any questions, or give us a call if you'd like to learn more about the elections, and you could stop in and you could meet the friendly and helpful staff. That includes me.
Thank you. Mr. Treasurer.
Thank you. No report.
Councilman Arage.
Do have a report. The Parks and Recreation Commission met on February 26th. There is a high demand for summer ice, so we're going to keep both surfaces up for the summer. The ice rink updates that council approved for the exhaust system and CO2 sensors are being worked on this week. The new cleaning machine arrived a few weeks ago, and we have been using it. It is effective, efficient, and already showing huge improvements in the bathrooms and bleachers especially. Inline rink building that is being renovated due to council's approval already has the electrical completed, and the building renovations will begin in approximately two weeks. Tri-State's figure skating competition will be April 11th through 13th. This covers Michigan, Indiana, Ohio, and Western Pennsylvania. The event is now open for registration. We will be also running the NHL Street in the Summer, which is a floor hockey program, and we'll be first in the area to run it, and participants receive NHL team-themed jerseys. Will also receive a $2,500 grant to get us started. Couple upcoming events, April 11th, Happy Hour Egg Hunt with DJ and food trucks at the golf course, register with a recreation apartment. And on April 12th, there is the Easter Extravaganza at Market Center Park, and that starts promptly at noon and is free to kids ages two to 10. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Osh.
My committee meets next week, so I'll report at the next meeting.
Thank you. Councilman Graziani.
No report.
The school board did meet. They did some housekeeping things. They approved some trips for robotics, DECA and Winter Guard, as well as the JROTC, and a fencing extension project for North Point and Allen schools. But they also recognized one of their own. Dr. Darlene Pomponio was recognized for her many years of service on the board. She's still on the board, but she was serving as the president of the Wayne County Association of School Boards, and she just resigned from her presidency there, so they honored her for her years of service, both on the board and in that association. Councilman George.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Commission on Aging will be meeting tomorrow at noon at the Senior Center. They will be having their annual St. Patrick's Day party luncheon on Thursday, March 13th at noon, and tickets are $20. And the case commission has been busy working on Easter events, which Victoria mentioned briefly. They will be working with the adult Happy Hour Easter Egg Hunt on Friday, August 12th at the South Winds Golf Course. The tickets are $10 per person. And then there's our annual Children's Easter Egg Hunt, which is Saturday, April 12th at Market Center Park. The age groups are two to four, five to seven, and eight to 10. And the hunt begins at 12 noon and ends at 12:01. And that's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Osh.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Planning Committee will be meeting next Monday, and I'll have a report then. Also, I want to let you know that I did patronize Missy Ken's. She groomed up my Nelson nicely. He smells delicious. I want to eat him up. So I recommend her highly if you have a pet.
Thank you, Madam President. The Downtown Development Association did meet on February 20th. Several items on the agenda included the big program application update, which is our business improvement grant through the city. They refocused on the application period for the businesses, and all that information is available online. You still have to turn it in person, because it may include pictures and descriptions and cost items, but it is available online for all businesses to check out a matching grant to help improve your business. They also awarded a Love It Again partnership for Market Center events, and this is an outside company that will assist our Downtown Development Director. In the past, she's had an intern to help her do that, and this will replace that intern at nearly the same amount of payment. She'll help with vendor and small business recruitment, event coordinator and support. And like I said, the costs should be offset the intern expenses on the budget. The third item we talked about was the Goodfellows Property Maintenance Agreement. This is a local company, which did win one of our awards at the mayor's speeches here. They've agreed to maintain all seven of the streetscapes on Eureka Road, and same cost as this year, and they're going to continue for the next three years. So we thought that was a great deal as well. And then we had Mr. Drysdale do a budget review for us, because a lot of the categories have changed from last year, and he just wanted to give us a heads-up as to language and descriptions that we're going to see when we approve the final budget this year. The last thing we talked about was the Small Shop Spectacular, which was kind of like a scavenger hunt for residents to shop our local businesses, take a picture of the squirrel, get your entries in. We did have three winners. Cindy Burley was the first-place winner. Kayla Weston was the second-place winner, and Jasmine Compass was the third-place winner. They also discussed several recommendations as we continue the event this fall. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Marsh, please, for the agenda.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair. Tonight, the first item under Communications A is regarding the Smart Municipal Community Credit Program Agreement. This is the standard annual agreement that funds our senior bus system and the bus tickets program that we provide to our seniors. Are there any questions from council?
Madam Chair.
Councilman George.
No questions, but just to repeat what you said, this supplements what we provide at the Senior Center. It's a supplement to it, so there are more advantages to our seniors to take advantage of. Sometimes a van's not available, but there are services, different services that they can provide, and it's good that we have it.
Absolutely. Yep. The next item is the renewal of Leeds Online, I'm sorry, the next item is the renewal of the Leeds Online Power Plus System. This is the reporting platform used by pawnbrokers and secondhand dealers to report their transactions. This system was first purchased in May of 2023, and this request is to extend the subscription for another year. Are there any questions from council? Okay, seeing none. The final item under Communications A is the request to purchase and waive the bid for Brightly software for primary use in Parks and Recreation. This is a custom-built software solution that will allow work tickets to be placed and tracked, and it's for everything from landscape issues, playground or arena repairs, even preventative maintenance for the different equipment and vehicles that we have. There is some additional cross-functionality that we will implement, so that all facilities in the city can be added to this program, so that repairs made by DPS can be tracked as well. The incorporation of this system is just another step in investing in our Parks and Recreation assets as we add staff, like a facilities coordinator. This is just going to be a tool that makes sure that we're continuing those investments are well-tracked. And so while we're recommending the bid be waived, this product was bid out through Omni Partners Cooperative Purchasing Agreement. That was a, that's a company that goes out and puts out RFPs on behalf of public entities, and then they award those contracts, so that those prices can be locked in and anyone can join into that bid process. So that's the pricing that you see on there. Are there any questions from council regarding this item?
Through the chair.
Councilman Osh.
Mr. Marsh, thank you so much for getting the answers that I asked for this week. Additionally, they have recommended or offered optional fees through the year 2029. Is that of any use to us or the Recreation Department, and is that something we're going to pursue down the road?
Yeah, so that, great question there. So the annual fee, if you sign up for it, and the subscription fee goes up about 10% a year, unless you lock in for a longer amount of time. While I believe this is going to be a system that we're going to benefit from greatly and we're going to want to stick with for many years and express that to them, it's a new system, and there's a cost to it. So before you get, you know, in too deep, we want to make sure that we do actually implement it well, we're using it, we like it, and so we have it where you can opt out after that second, or after that first full year, and all the other years are optional, but they have been locked in at the five-year increase rate, yeah.
Thank you for the negotiations.
Yeah. A little back and forth.
Thank you. We'll reconvene at 7 o'clock.
Regular meeting will begin. We'll start with a Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Lost my pen, I'm good.
Councilman Ayridge.
Present.
Councilman Ayers Reese.
Present.
Councilman Golic.
Here.
Councilman George.
Here.
Councilman Graziani.
Present.
Councilman Kuspa.
Here.
Councilman Roush.
Here.
I need a motion to approve the work-study meeting minutes dated February 19, 2025.
Madam Chair.
Councilman George.
I make a motion to approve the work-study meeting minutes dated February 19, 2025.
Support. Motion by George, supported by Ayers Reese. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the regular city council meeting minutes dated February 19, 2025. Councilman Roush.
I make a motion to approve the regular city council meeting dated February 19, 2025.
Support. Motion by Roush, reported by Ayers. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. There are no scheduled persons in the audience, no consideration of bids, and no scheduled hearings. First item under Communications A is a letter from Laura Walsh regarding the Smart Municipal and Community Credit Program Agreement. Madam Clerk.
Enclosed, please find documents for the City of Southgate Transportation Program and Funding Programs available for the SMART program under the following title, Municipal and Community Credits Program for Fiscal Year 2025. Please review the attached contract for your approval and authorization.
What's a pleasure to the council?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Golic.
I make a motion that we approve the Municipal and Community Credits Program for Fiscal Year 2025 and authorize administration to sign.
Support. Motion by Golic, supported by George. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Next is a letter from the mayor regarding the renewal of Leeds Online Power Plus Investigation System Service Package. Madam Clerk.
I have reviewed the above and concur with the Public Safety Director's recommendation to approve the renewal of the Leeds Online Power Plus Investigations System Service Package for a period covering May 15, 2025 to May 14, 2026, in the amount of $4,404 with Leeds Online of Plano, Texas. Funds are available in the Federal Forthiture Fund.
What's a pleasure to the council?
Madam Chair.
Councilman George.
I move that we approve the renewal of the Land Online Power Plus Investigation System Service Package with Leeds Online for a one-year term of May 15, 2025 through May 14, 2026 in the amount of $4,404.
Support. Motion by George, supported by Ayers Reese. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Last is a letter from the mayor regarding the Recreation Asset Management Software. Madam Clerk.
It is recommended by the Parks and Recreation Director, and I concur that the bid process be waived and the purchase of Recreation Asset Management Software be awarded to Brightly Software Incorporated of Raleigh, North Carolina in the amount of $11,378.98 for cloud services, asset essentials professional plus subscription for the period of April 1, 2025 to June 30 of 2026, and $10,095.65 for professional services, asset essentials implementation with consulting for a total amount of $21,474.33. Funds for this purchase are available in the Parks and Recreation Milage Fund. Your favorable consideration of this matter is requested.
What's a pleasure to the council?
Madam Chairman.
Councilman Roush.
I make a motion, we waive the bid process and approve the purchase of Recreation Asset Management Software from Brightly Software Incorporated of Raleigh, North Carolina in the amounts of $11,378.68 for cloud services, asset essentials professional plus subscription for the period of April 1 through the 2025 through June 30 of 2026, and a one-time setup fee of $10,095.65 for the professional services, asset essentials implementation with consulting for a total amount of $21,474.33.
Support. Motion by Roush, supported by Ayers. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, just before we go on, I just want to appreciate and thank council for this, this purchase. You know, we invested so much in our parks over the last few years due to the village. You know, before we had the village, I used to say that the, the parks were put in when people's grandparents used to play on them. And it's so important that we have a system in place and use technology to help us to make sure we maintain those parks. So I commend council on this decision and thank my staff for identifying this management system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman.
Councilman Roush.
I just wanted to make a quick comment. Mayor, you say, but I was at my shop earlier this week, and some customers were talking about another city's park, and they complimented Southgate, and it was, made me feel good when I was like, well, I'm a city councilman there, and so that's our recreation village that does that. So, so you're welcome. So that's a good thing. So, so good to our staff. So, yep, we, there are people that do notice the good parks that we have.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman George.
And it's nice to see that they are being used.
Yes.
See the kids getting out.
There are no items under Communications B. There's no ordinances. Is there any old business the council would like to discuss? Seeing none, is there any new businesses council would like to discuss? Seeing none, what unscheduled persons in the audience, if you'd like to address council, you can come to the name, or come to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to address council.
Yes, my name is Robert Hines. I live at 12055 Fordline Street, Southgate. Is that all you want? Okay. One of the problems I've noticed, because there have been four water main breaks.
On Fordline.
On Fordline. And I was wondering, one, is that water main going to be lined anytime soon, so we don't have any more? Because in the spring, the DPS is going to have quite the job of leveling out all the ground and reseeding and whatever. And another thing I noticed is, I was taking a shower the other morning, and I hardly had any hot water because a lot of the dirt got into my hot water tank. And I usually flush my hot water tank every year. This time, there was more coming out, and which was stopping the hot water tank, the heat from getting it, because all the dirt settled on the bottom. So everybody that lives within this area should maybe flush their hot water tanks because most people don't even know you have to do it, which I do mine every year and get a little bit out, but this year was a heck of a lot more. I would say 20 times more than previous years. So are they going to be lining any of the water mains? For us?
Fordline is, but go ahead.
Yeah, through the chair. So the city right now is in the process of doing a capital outlay for the next five years where we look at our roads and water mains and line up those projects that are prioritized over the next five years. Water mains are included in that. We have been doing water main lining. I can't say right now whether Fordline, where that falls on that, on that, on that list as we prepare for the budget, that will be part of what council sees as that capital outlay. I do know that the road there between Breast and Goddard is due to be reconstructed this year, because I know that's, that's also an issue that the residents there have been experiencing. When it comes to water main lining, it is a good solution. It can't always be implemented. The condition of the water main has to be such that you can actually, you can use that solution. We'll certainly look into that line. It may be something that's already on Hennessy's List, that particular section. And generally, what does inform those capital outlays is when we have lots of breaks in one area, and we look at that line and say, okay, this is a problem line. We've done it in the past in certain areas where we fixed water mains because there's just a number of breaks happening in a small section. Sounds like that's what you guys are experiencing now. I'll just say the other thing, too, is each year, we, we put out for congressional direct spending through, through the federal government, and one of the projects that we've asked for in the past and will be asking for again is money for water main lining. We recently met with representatives from Darren, Senator Darren Camilleris from the state government, and we said, because he yearly will come to our office and talk with us and say, what do you need? Whatever the things going on in Southgate. And one of the things that we always tell them is infrastructure. It's just one of the biggest needs that we have, and water main lining is a good solution. It's also scalable in sense, in the sense that if they can give us $100,000 or $1 million, we can apply it and actually, and actually line a section of pipe that gets, that's needed.
Now, you said that they're going to be redoing Fordline Street between Breast and Goddard.
Correct. Yes.
How about the portion north of, or south of that, right around Yorkshire, where we're dodging holes? If they put in patch one day, the very next day, there's a hole that would have swallowed a kid, and they patched it the following day. It's been patched six times in six weeks.
So again, through the chair, I know the roads right now, I've had a couple of conversations this week specifically about that. Hennessy is currently actually going through and doing the road assessment and prioritizing what sections need to be reconstructed, sectioned, or patched. In the wintertime, we know that the patch is not the best solution. It is a Band-Aid, but it's better than having a pothole in that moment where someone can actually do real damage to their car. Road reconstruction is not an option. Street sectioning is not even an option at this time of year, but in the next, in the coming weeks, we'll have that list of all of the priority projects, and then they'll, we'll go through and say, these are the sections that need to be reconstructed, well, sectioned or patched.
Okay. Well, I would like to say, I just want to bet. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
The other thing I'd like to mention on water main, just to let the residents know, we have 88 miles of water mains in our community, and it costs about $150 a linear foot.
Yeah.
To replace. So we are obviously not able to do a lot each year, but we were very innovative even before the Flint water crisis to be relining our water mains. We do a little at a time. Our focus has primarily been on the transmission lines, and what I mean by that, those are the major water mains that are on our, on our major roads. Dick Toledo, Allen Road, Eureka. It's very difficult really to get into our neighborhoods, but we also try to address if there's multiple leaks to try and either replace the line or find it, because as it gets narrower and narrower, as it goes into the neighborhoods, it's more difficult to line those water mains. So we are, you know, and Mr. Hines can bring it to our attention anytime he wants to, whatever, as you do, whether it's potholes or anything else, but I think Bob and I have all been around long enough to know that anything you do in the wintertime is not going to hold. It's all, the cold patch is just a temporary fix to try and reduce the amount, the size of the hole, and that's all we can do. And it is, it's not meant to be a long-term fix. We do have during the, the good weather, the cold patch, which really does work for multiple years to help maintain a road system, but again, it's not ideal, and what we're doing, we budget, and this council, every year budgets for that, but it's not something we can do at a wholesale level throughout the community at any given time, because that's a lot of mileage of water mains to deal with. So I do appreciate the comments, but at the same time, there are limits in terms of what the city can address at any one given time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other persons in the audience that would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to claims and accounts. Councilman Roush.
Move to approve warrant 1516 in the amount of $2,201,414.14.
Support.
Motion by Roush, supported by George. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. I want to motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair.
Councilman George.
I move that we adjourn.
Support. Motion, George, supported by Ayers Reese. Any discussion or objections? Or adjourned.